I'd like to bring this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
I'm here.
Kendamirz.
Here.
Robert DeSina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritallick.
Here.
Denise Ross.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment. Anyone that would like to address the Town Council, please come forward and state your name and address.
I love technology. The microphone turned itself on. Al Mickel, 95 Woodvine Avenue. I'm here to talk about public participation. A lot of the questions I have for the Town Council are usually yes or no questions. And I think some of the questions I ask are probably interest, other people in the town might be interested in. Because we don't have public participation, I can't even get yes or no answers. So, I'm going to ask you to put back public participation. And if you want, only yes or no answers would be fine. I can pose the questions accordingly. One of the good things that I saw was the audits done. And I tried reading it. I got up to page 50. Okay? It's 124 pages long. I've got a lot of questions on some of the details in the audit. Now, this is probably not the right venue for asking all those questions. So, I'm going to certainly ask the Town Manager and the Finance Director if they would spend some time with me. Hopefully, not a lot, but there's 120 pages, explaining some of the details and some of the good points and the bad points that are in the audit. So, I'll take that up with the Town Manager. The other thing that I saw talking about audits is there is, we're going out for bids for another audit. And the bids are for a three-year timeframe. And there's a significant difference between the current person that's doing the audit and a new firm. Over the course of three years, it's about $65,000. Not that the King &amp; King Associates do a bad job, but sometimes good is to have another person take a look and see what they can find in our audit statement. I would suggest we take the low bid. They're right in Farmington. They seem like they're adequate for doing this job. They're a rather large company. I didn't realize that. So, those are the public comments so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Deb Smalley, 760 Middlebury Road. Just a few things I wanted to talk about today. I dropped off a letter to, Town Hall here, to Mr. Lukowski. The town's been blessed with that man. So, it's going to be a beautiful town when he gets done with it. That's all I have to say. Regarding my letter I dropped off, it pertains to the Freedom of Information Act. I dropped off a letter stating, "Who gave this town authorization to destroy my records?" That's all I want to know. Who did it? I wrote, here's the letter. And I called, you know, I called the Commissioner in Hartford. I talked, I talked to Mr. Henick. Today, I talked to Mr. Blair. He said, "Does the town know that once you hand that letter?" And I handed it personally. I didn't want to do an email. He goes, "You can email them. You could email the Town Manager. You could email whoever you want. You can email the whole Town Council." I dropped it off. You people have four-day window to get back to me, to address this letter. You don't know the law. You don't know the law. I mean, I dropped, I wrote this letter, March 21st, dropped it off, March 22nd. I didn't hear anything. So, can you make a note of it to get back to me, email me, call me? And just say, "You know what? We're working on collecting all the information, all the records that were destroyed." What does it say? The name and the contact information of the individual or the department responsible for authorizing the destruction of my property records. I lived there 39 years. I want it all from the day I signed that paperwork, that mortgage. I want everything that happened at my property. My property was beautiful. Do you see it? And then it says the date on which the authorization was granted. So, who was granted? What was the date that it was granted? That you could go destroy, oh, just go destroy Deb Smalley's records? And then the third, and the reason for the destruction? The reason? What was the reason? I came here for how many times? Just fix the driveway. Give me a new driveway, fix the road, and just do it. Now, I want all the records, I want all the records. Now, going back to August 9th, I went to my, I went through, I have to, all papers of good notes I take. August 9th, there was a, I don't know, Zoom meeting here with the Town Council, with Kendamirz and DeSina, oh, officer, Mark Ramo, Mark Sanduli, put a film of my property on here. And Kenny said, "Get out, you know, go, you know. That's enough, Mark. Okay. You know, you guys didn't want to see no more." It should be on film. I went through my records. I don't see any film. That's it. That's it. But that's enough. Get out. You didn't even want to see, you didn't even want to see what I've been going through. So, you shut him down. I understand this council, a couple of you people over here, because I didn't want to put an apron with this Lou Spina guy, please. He calls me up and says, "You know what? Fall's coming. You got a timeframe to put an apron at the end of your driveway." I don't want an apron. It still stays in the sky and the neighbor. You know, I say it's coming from the neighbor, it's coming from the sky, it's coming from the street. It's twists, the road is twisted. It comes from Cherry Avenue, and you can see it rolls over, jumps on the property of the neighbor. You know, you're right, it comes from the neighbor, but it comes from the street, on the property, and coming down, and pooling. I mean, it's pooling in my, I mean, so, I mean, if someone could clear that up, where's that Zoom summer, August 9th? A few of you were here, and a few of you were up there on the screen. But that's okay. We're going to find out about August 9th, 2021. Last year, 2022, Lou Spina, Mark Sanduli picked it up for me. I have to clear that up. I said, "I picked it up." It was last year, I picked it up, he picked it up. He, and he came and gave it to me. He goes, "For your $14." I said, "$14 for this little thing I sent to him? And it was nothing in it. Half the stuff that was in that packet is what I gave the town. All the emails from Roy Kavanagh. And all the emails with Chuck Vergers and all that. It's half the packet was what I gave the town. Okay? So, I had Attorney Pelosi write to Town a letter because I said, "If we could get something going..." I'm not paying you. Let the town pay you, I told Mr. Attorney Pelosi. I said, "Write a letter to the town, have the town pay you the attorney." I'm not paying for no attorney. And so, he wrote a letter, he said, I never saw it. And he had Scott Myers from Scott Myers Associates come out, surveyed it. He, I have a letter from Scott saying, "It's fixable. And the town, you know, I've got a problem with the town, but you could fix it. I mean, it's no big deal." And I was told, "Give them $2,000. Give Scott Myers, give them $2,000." I said, "No, let the town give Scott Myers $2,000 for the survey. You don't even need a survey. You could go out there. You don't, you don't, you could go out there and you could see it." But there's a survey, so I called Scott. I called Scott and I said, "Hey, Scott, what's going on with this survey?" He goes, "I gave it to the town. I gave it to Mr. Paul." I'm going to mess his name up. Bunovic? He gave it to him. So, you know, so you have the survey. And anyway, there were so many surveys done in front of my house. I'm like, "They're surveying again? The town is having another surveyor come up and do it again?" There's always guys surveying the street over the years, not recently, over the years. So, I wrote an email to Mr. Lukowski stating, "I have a proposal from a Vic Pieragini who came out." Someone said he does good work, he's really reasonable. I said, "Hey, we like reasonable. You know, anybody, you're trying to run a town like this, you like reasonable." So, he gave me a proposal. And I wrote an email to, and I know he's very busy. I have nothing bad to say about Mr. Lukowski. He's wonderful. You're going to see. But, you know, I know he's busy, he can't get back to me regarding. I said, "Is it okay if I email you the proposal?" And I didn't hear anything. And then I just sent an email that I would like everybody to take pictures in front of my, in front of my driveway. I want all the senators, I want Joe Palata, Representative Joe Palata. If anybody over here wants to come, Mr. Ramo, Mr. Lukowski, everybody. I want pictures, so I could have pictures. I was told over the years, people came out and inspected. I said, "Where's the inspection report? When a town goes out and inspects a property, you got to have like paperwork here, Mrs. Smalley, meet us there." I'm a Realtor. My life is flexible. I can meet anybody whenever they want me to meet them. You say, "I have so-and-so coming out, they're going to inspect the property on this day, this time. We're going to take pictures, take a picture of me that I did come out to your property." I mean, I have a camera. I never saw anybody come out when they said, "Oh, we've been out there. We've been out to your property."
Not to interrupt, but you are coming up on your five minutes.
I'm all done? Well, I'm all done. Why, how come, what sense is it a law that you all could only talk five minutes?
Well, that was a policy that the Town Council has put in place.
Oh, it is. Oh, I didn't know that.
How will you use the rest of my time?
Sorry.
I'm all done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can I just ask one question? How come no one like participates and says, you know, "We're looking into this, we're looking into that. Oh, we heard about that you want to know who, you know, who authorized whoever to destroy your property records from 39 years ago." Like, how come nobody says, "Hey, Dad, you know, this is what we're doing for you." Like, this is what, how it is. All right. So, hopefully, I could hear from somebody.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Town Council? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 21st, 2023 special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes.
I make a motion to approve the March 20th, 23 public hearing minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 20th regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes.
And lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the February 28th, 2023 special meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All oppose? One abstention. Motion passes. I have nothing for the Chairman's report, so move on to Mark with the Town Manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. Mr. Mickel, I don't appreciate you stealing my thunder, but the 2022 audit was finished and completed and it's been posted on the Internet. You should have received an email for that audit. Our School Capital Project Committee has reconvened. They met on April 5th, and we went through some of the process for the money that are the bonding projects that we have in place for the school. We're beginning meeting on this coming Wednesday to discuss best practices and processes. We want to identify roles and responsibilities as we begin to work with the Board of Education so that we all understand what our role is in as we move forward. And one thing that I thought was important that Mr. Porter, who's the Chairman, that we discussed today is really setting accountability understanding so that these projects can move forward without too much issue. We did go through the second round of HR interviews. I expect to make an offer for that position this week. And that's all I have for my report.
Thank you. Next, we have our subcommittee reports. And it's my understanding that we'll go over general fund revenue.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. General fund revenues on page one of your book. I'll just go through quickly what each section is, and then I'd be happy to take any questions after that. The top section of the property taxes is pretty self-explanatory. The very top number is a changing number depending on whatever the expenditures are going to be. We then have the State of Connecticut to School section. That revenue, I get directly from the State of Connecticut, along with the State to the Town. Those numbers come from the State of Connecticut. All the other ones are, as it says at the top, it's an estimate of revenue. I usually go through two fiscal years prior to the one I'm working on to see what kind of monies come in in each area and take an educated guess on what we think will be coming in. I generally try to be a little conservative there because I hate to have a shortfall in revenue. But we do have some key ones that come in very good every year. The building permits always do, conveyance taxes do, Town Clerk recording fees come in very good. Our pilot has gone up over the past couple of years, which is great news. And Taft usually gives us an extra $5,000 every year. So, the number that's in the current budget, I am going to change to 190 once we get through some more of this process. So, if anybody has any questions on specific line items and how the revenue is determined, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments? Gary?
On the State of Connecticut, communication tower rentals, I see it went from $36,000 to 180.
So, that's, no, that's what we've received to date, the 36,000.
Yeah, go over them.
So, it's basically the 180 all along. And that's payments they make to us in lieu of taxes.
Anyone else? So, this, this 89 million, 780, 880 estimated revenues for this upcoming budget, that's based on, is that based on a change to the mill rate?
That's based on the current expenditures. So, whatever the expenditures are, we have to bring in the same amount of revenue. So, we estimate everything that's going to come in, and then the top number being the prop to current year taxes is the number that will move depending on the final expenditure number.
So, that's based, is that, so that, is that based on a change in our mill rate to meet those expenses, right?
Yes.
Do we know what that increase in the mill rate is set to be based on this budget?
I do have that. The proposed mill rate, the way it stands right now, would be 36.86, which is a 1.92 mill increase.
Thank you.
36 point what?
36.86. An increase of 1.92.
And just to go on with the topic that you were saying, expenditures are increasing a little over $6 million, and our real estate taxes are going up almost $5 million. Is that accurate?
Our real estate taxes, well, it would be in...
Our taxes are going from an estimate of 66 million up to almost 71 million.
Correct.
And the overall spending is going from roughly 83 million up to almost 90.
Correct. Yes.
And just so I'm clear, the general fund revenue total is 79 million, 814,000, some odd change. Comparing that against...
That was two years ago.
Right, no, no, I understand. And that's for 21, 22 budget. So, we're going from almost 80 million to almost 90 million in a two-year period? Is that right?
Right, so, right, 21, 22 was the 79 million, then it went to 83 million, and now we're at 89.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, roughly 12% increase over those two years combined. Looks like we have people still looking at numbers. Are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Next on the agenda is the final budget review session. Just for the record, it's not exactly the final one. We have to make a recommendation to go to our public hearing at our next meeting, so roughly two weeks from now. At that point, we'll need to vote on a budget to send to public hearing. Public hearing will then be set. We have our public hearing, and then we vote typically subsequent to the public hearing to send a budget to referendum. Does anyone have any questions, comments about the budget that we currently have in front of us? Denise?
Just one question. What is going to be the order tonight if we all want to speak about this? You're going to go in order or at random?
I'm going with whoever wants to raise their hand first. But like I said, tonight, there's no vote. The next meeting, there'll be a vote to send something to public hearing.
Right. At this time, can we make recommendations if we want to, if we think something should be cut or added?
Yeah, you could, like I said, any...
We can do that?
Okay, we're not doing a motion on making changes, but just general discussion of comments on the budget.
So, if we do general comments on it, is someone, will somebody or the administration take our comments into consideration and change the budget or add to the budget?
Not until our next meeting when we vote to make any changes to the budget. So, today's just discussion among Town Council members.
Right, we can speak, but now at the next meeting, we're going to make the changes.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll vote on making changes, yes.
Okay.
I think she wants to speak. That was the preface.
I did go through the budget, every department and everything, and I know it's a big increase in this budget, and we can't afford to give everybody what they want. I had a concern with all of the overtime and everybody's line items. I ended up overtime on everything, and it comes to $47,000 minus the Police Department and Fire Department because that we won't touch because of... The Police Department, Public Works, I'm sorry. And I don't understand why some departments have overtime. I mean, some departments are salary, and I don't know why we have overtime in their item, in their line items.
My only comment to that is typically just the department heads are salary. Most of the others are still part of unions and are hourly in one way or the other. So, if they have to attend meetings after hours, like one like this, most likely there is overtime incurred. Is that accurate?
We also have overtime for highway workers during a storm.
Right, I didn't include the highway workers. Highway and police, I did not include.
No.
Because that's, that's a necessity in the area.
Just to make a note that the overtime has been budgeted for, you know, years of understanding how the departments work. The majority of our employees are union-based. The salary-based employees are strictly our department heads. Even our managers are under contractual obligation, and they're entitled to overtime pay when they're working more than their 35 hours scheduled. That's basic labor law. So, we responsibly budget that overtime to ensure that we could pay our employees if the need comes that they have to work that. I'd have to do a little more research to see if every overtime budget has been expensed, but I would tend to think if we looked at, if that whole line item was expensed, we would probably find that that's not the case. I would, and this is just a guess, that we would probably find that there were some monies that were given back to the town because those monies were not used. If you'd like, I could take a look at that and try to identify that, if that would help.
The other thing, I went, when I went through it, I know all the vehicles are necessary and everybody, every department wants...
Can you speak a little closer to the microphones so we can hear you?
And every department would like theirs, but looking through it, I think maybe we could maybe cut one or two from a couple of the departments that aren't really, I mean, they need them, but with the times, I think maybe we could cut one or two from, you know, Public Works Park Rec. And I know the Fire Department had put in for some, and the Police Department. What's it now? And then with, I'm sorry, just one second. And I noticed with the car allowance, I know everybody gets a car allowance, but to save some money, wouldn't it be possible if some of the employees have to go somewhere so that they could use one of the town cars that we have that aren't in use on a daily basis so we could save on the car allowance?
Are you just, are you talking about mileage payment or car allowance? I think the Town Manager's position...
I'm sorry, the mileage. I'm sorry.
So, my suggestion to you is to take a ride when you leave tonight and go down to the lower lot and look at our cars. You're looking, when I was hired two years, two and a half years ago, they offered me the same patrol car that I drove as a detective that was probably 10 years old when I was driving it then. Our cars are very outdated, and to be honest with you, we have to start seriously considering the safety of our vehicles and putting our employees in these vehicles. I'm a little concerned over that, and I believe I mentioned this before in past discussions over our vehicles. We don't have a huge fleet of vehicles that we could just pull back and take off our payroll or our vehicle inventory and save a tremendous amount of money. I'd be happy to sit with you and go through our inventory to actually, so you have a better understanding of those vehicles. Most of our money's invested in our high-energy departments, our Highway Department, our Police Department, our Fire Department. They need their vehicles to be responsible and reliable. As far as any other department in this town, they're driving a car that's 10 to 20 years old. We barely keep them together, you know, and they budget small amounts. We even tried to decrease the budget numbers this year and take some of the work and give it to our mechanics at the Highway Department to kind of save money that way, to keep our old fleet running. But I would suggest you take a ride down there. It would give you, it would really give you a better understanding of what vehicles we have here.
I just have two more. There, in the budget is a social service worker, and I understand we need it, Lisa did report, and everybody else. But didn't we just hire the part-timer to a full-timer? So, if we have a social worker, what is the part-timer who just became full-time going to be doing? Because isn't she in the social service department?
She is. She's a social service clerk, which does not have the credentials of a social service worker. It's two separate jobs. It's more clerical in nature. We are trying to, I have to actually meet with Lisa Crewe this week to discuss some of the assignments she'll be receiving. We're going to try and give her additional work to fill that extra time. So, it's two separate positions. One is credentialed and one is not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll hold off. I'll let someone else speak. I'll, I'll hold off, I'll let someone else speak.
Anyone else? Nothing, no? Rachel, I have a microphone.
Oh, there we go, okay. I was looking at the budget for the senior center, and if I did the math correctly, the increase from the fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, the adopted budget to the town manager recommended budget is a thirty-two point seven percent increase. Which is just extraordinarily high. I got some answers to my questions, but in terms of one of the positions was not new, I think they said they separated it out, that's why it looked like it was a new position. But it seems like an assistant senior center coordinator for almost forty thousand dollars. Seems like something that, you know, maybe is not something we can afford at the time. And then I was also a little bit confused about the increase in the senior center and the operator. I, I don't know if that was, those are the two bus drivers or how that works, but aren't they paid hourly?
They are. So basically, they added extra hours, well, let's start, let's start with one question at a time, there are quite a few in there. So there was some confusion in the positions. So the secretary position was broken out, which used to be contained inside the temporary salaries position.
Okay.
So the temporary salaries position for twenty-two, twenty-three was twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Okay.
It's now down to twelve hundred dollars. There was twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars added to that part-time secretary to reflect that position, and then it reflects correctly in the budget. The senior center operators are actually the, the bus operators. And that's broken, you know, Ms. Carew or the department head, I'm sorry, her name escapes me at the moment. Laura broke that into an hourly to get more bus time of being available to our town residents. So they added more hours to that. So that was the reason for the increase in that. And I apologize, I'm not feeling very well tonight, so I'm a little slow in responding. And then was there an additional question in there?
I guess, I guess just, you know, can we afford that thirty-nine thousand dollar assistant senior center coordinator? And there's also some other big increases, like with the special events and programs. That's almost a fifty percent increase, and the recreation supplies is almost a fifty percent increase. It's not, you know, total dollar amounts, a lot of money, but I didn't get the sense that there was a fifty percent increase in visits to the senior center when I asked the question about that.
Yep. I did address that with both Lisa Crewe and Laura. And they are gonna come back and report to you because there has been a significant increase into the programs. And I, I felt very strongly that we should support this in this budget. You know, if you, if the council decides to cut this budget, at some point, I'm definitely gonna have to go to this budget line item and take that out. But at this point, that demographic is growing. If we don't invest in this demographic, at what point do we do that? We get a lot of positive feedback from the senior center. The seniors enjoy the time down there. Every time I'm down there, I wanna work down there full-time, to be ask, to be honest with you. I mean, they're enjoying their time, they're interactive. I wanna see that program to be successful. I don't think that it's been reflected properly, and I don't think you got the answers that you needed to understand that. But I did ask them to kinda put some numbers together to come back and report to you because I think it is important that they do that so that you do see why I would like to support this program.
Yeah, that would be very appreciated because as you can see, I'm trying to understand the numbers and I fully support any work with seniors. I mean, having a father who has dementia, I know how important it is for them to stay active. So, you know, if we need to do this, I definitely wanna support it. But yeah, I wanna make sure that the need is there, given how tight this, this budget is. So, yeah, any more data would be very appreciated.
Absolutely.
I also had a question for Sue, going back to the question I asked about the bookkeepers. Sorry, I'm not, I'm not. Do you remember what page that's on?
Page six?
Eighty-six?
Six, yes.
Oh, six. Yeah, so, yeah, on page six, with the bookkeeper two and the bookkeeper one and the assistant finance director and the payroll bookkeeper. I'm a little bit confused about which of those are full-time and which of those are part-time because I thought one of them was only working part-time, but a full-time salary's been budgeted, so are they gonna become full-time?
Correct, on all counts, yes. So they're all full-time positions. One of them is not working the full thirty-five, but in anticipation that it will become thirty-five hours. Those are all contractual.
Sorry, that's the assistant finance director position?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the reason why you need to go, why this position needs to go to full-time from part-time is?
There's, there's always work to be done.
Okay.
Speaking else, Rachel?
I just had a question, going back to the, when, when you mentioned, Sue, about the, when you factored in the estimated revenue for the one point nine-two mil increase. So if the town council votes to cut the budget and send a lower number than what is the town manager's recommended budget, what does that do to that one point nine-two and then the estimated revenue?
The one point nine-two will lower. It will, there'll be a less of an increase in the mil rate if there's less expenditures. And then to reach that number, our current year tax number would go down.
Right.
So if you look at the book, you have your revenue and your expenditures, the bottom lines match, they have to come in balance. So if you're low, if you're gonna take away some of the expenditures, then I'm taking away some of the revenue. Where does that come from? The taxes. That's what decreases the fund down, what decreases the mil rate.
Okay, all right, good, that's what I think, thank you.
And just for the record, what's the estimated value of one mil? Somewhere in the one point nine million dollar range?
Do you have that? Okay, so one mil is one point nine mil.
One point nine.
One mil is, can you say that again?
A mil is worth one point nine million.
One point nine million.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Do we know, do we know what one mil equates to on the average taxpayer?
As far as taxpayers?
The real estate taxpayer, yes.
So I, as I do every year, I get an average assessment. And this year, the average amount is one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one twenty-seven. So if you equate that with the increase of one point nine percent more, it would be an additional three hundred and twenty-four dollars a year. On an average house assessed at one sixty-nine, one twenty-seven.
Not a mansion, right?
No.
That's a, a one, a one point nine mil increase.
Correct. Where it stands right now, as, as the budget is.
Who's that number again, three hundred and what?
Three twenty-four.
Three twenty-four, three hundred and twenty-four a year.
Thank you.
Don't forget, that is assessed value.
Right, that's the assessed value.
Any other questions or comments from the town council? Like I said, at our next meeting, we'll need to make a motion and move a budget to public hearing.
Through the chair, may I ask?
Yep.
Make a suggestion? I, I know, I do go to the senior center and everything, and we have that new program, my senior program, and it works wonderful. And I was just wondering if Lisa or Laura could print out the totals for each program, and that would give everybody here a feel of what's being done and how much. I know the, I know the, the luncheons and stuff, they, we do get a lot of people that go onto them. You get about sixty people at a, a dinner or something, but during the day, can we see what those figures are like for regular activities?
Absolutely, we paid for the program and we should use the data to make sure that, that's supporting, you know, the statement, so I agree a hundred percent.
Thank you, because it, it isn't so easy, you just put your card there and hit a thing.
Well, how easy is it?
Yeah. Thank you.
Last call, anyone else? Turn your mic on. Thank you.
Through the chair. I recall in a previous meeting, most recently, the presentation by Mrs. Crewe and the interim senior center director. They provided us a package of all the programs for a monthly, a given month. And every date has something for the seniors, something for them to look forward to. And the reason for them being given rights, so to speak, is if they don't have means of getting there, for some of the seniors, it's the only thing they may have to look forward to on a given day. And they're picked up by the minivan, the minibus, whatever you may wanna call it. The person that drives it has to be trained, licensed, insured, and if you wanna refresh, you remember yourself, look at the handout that was given out. They have, for example, last month, they had a St. Patrick's Day dance. They had a, a Super Bowl party months ago, and the people that show up, there's quite a few people. They had photos provided in that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't even know where to start. I think we have to admit that this is one of the biggest budget increases we have seen in years. And we're caught between a rock and a hard place. Every department that has sat before us, I, I personally believe has justified what they've asked for. I think there's more personnel needed in some areas, and I think the town manager has overseen the different departments and helped make some corrections so things are functioning more efficiently. But we're still needing more money. As, at home, everything is increased, everything is increased with the town. The bottom line is, I'm a senior living on social security, and there's a lot of others much like myself. Can we afford this kind of an increase? And the nine of us are gonna have to decide that. And it's not, if, if cuts are made, it's not gonna be in my mind because we don't believe that the dollars are needed, it's gonna be because we can't afford it. And that we don't believe the taxpayers can. And I think people need to understand that and realize the kind of difficulty we're dealing with. And the education department has presented us in the last couple of years with additional monies that they need over and above their budget. And I believe that's gonna happen again. So please bear in mind when we talk about making any cuts that it isn't because we don't appreciate or understand the need. It's for the ability to pay, that's the big concern.
Thank you.
Mary Ann, very well said. Thank you.
I think we'll move on. New business?
I make a motion to add to the agenda, an agenda item nine G, to consider authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with Dayton Construction Company for the replacement of bridge number zero four four zero nine, Wilson Street Bridge over Steel Brook, which is state project number nine one five three dash four four oh nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is just adding the agenda item to the agenda. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Extinctions, motion passes?
I make a motion to appoint Alan Mickle, ninety-five Woodvine Avenue, as a member of the Torrington Area Health District for a three-year term, expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. It's an appointment to replace Joshua Lambo's expired term.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions, motion passes?
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute a contract with CNS Specialty Incorporated for the purchase of a new stainless steel body, one hundred and ten-foot ladder on a Spartan Gladiator LFD custom chassis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would someone from the Friday panel wanna just give us a brief overview?
Thank you. I wish we didn't have to come up and do this with the times we're in, but we had asked for one point eight million dollars and unfortunately, the truck bid came in at one point seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. We only put a bond in for one point five million, so we're short two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. There are some discounts, and I don't know if you read the, the letter, I don't wanna read it all over again, but there are some discounts. If we paid for the chassis, which was six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six forty-four, they would credit us sixty-four thousand, five hundred. And if we paid for the ladder placement on the chassis, they would, they show credit of fifty-eight hundred dollars. So we would be down to a total of two hundred and one thousand, nine fifty-one. We can use money from our vehicle replacement fund. This, the bid came in, the truck won't be ready for eight hundred and fifty days, which is twenty-eight months. So we have a couple, we have some time here, and with the vehicle replacement funds that we put in each year, we can pay for the excess through that. Unfortunately, that would push our Rescue Ten replacement back a few more years. Looking at the vehicle replacement fund, it was put in years ago and trucks at that point were five hundred thousand dollars. Our new engine one, which is being built now, is seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and I'm being told within the next five years, that pumper trucks are gonna be a million dollars and ladder trucks are gonna be two million dollars. So we're at a crossroads here where we need to do this. Unfortunately, they gave us a, a timeline of April twenty-eighth to sign the contract. If we don't sign the contract by April twenty-eighth, there will be price changes, as well as they may withdraw the bid totally. And there was only one bidder because trucks right now are, are three years out mostly, and most companies, they don't even wanna take on the work. So I'm asking that we approve this and use money from the vehicle replacement fund in the future years to pay off the excess. We do have, and they, CNS has agreed to help us market the old truck. We're, we're looking at hopefully maybe fifty thousand dollars for the old truck, you know, for, for sale. But that'd be hard pressed to get that.
Any questions? Can I assume that even though we only received one bid, that you went through the normal process for the bid as far as posting?
Yes, they went through the normal process, through the town, through Donna Ford, did the, all the work on it, and I applaud her for the work she's done. Unfortunately, there was just only one bidder, and we only had one with the engine one purchase, where they only had one bidder for that as well, so there's, I don't know what's going on in the, in the manufacturing world, but this is all we're getting.
Was it the same company?
No, that was a nice bid, the engine and this company CNS out of Rhode Island, and the builder is out in Idaho. Or Iowa, rather, Iowa, twining manufacturing.
And have you ever purchased any equipment from CNS Specialty?
No, but they have a good track background, and we've touched into them.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Or, or is everyone getting notice of our bidding process? I mean, I'm assuming that's the case, right?
Yes, we had one, one person bidded and they requested an extension, that they wanted another month out. We just said, no, we're not gonna give you, the bid is what it was, the specs are what they were, so.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three to consider an appropriation of one million, five hundred thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for pavement management and pavement rehabilitation projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Either elaborate on that? Someone needs to turn off their mic, please.
So, just to bring you back into the realm of talking about ARPA funds, back in May of 2022, the ARPA Fund Committee was put together, they recommended to the Town Council in May of 2022 to put 1.5 million dollars towards the investment in parking down on Main Street, 1.325 million dollars for sidewalks and streetscapes, 1.5 million dollars for paving, which left a million dollars for contingency. This money is in one of our line items. During that meeting, there was a motion to put a placeholder on these, on these, this amount of money, and we did that. Conditionally, you had asked that I come back to you with a full plan. I don't have a full plan still to this date. I'm very close to having a agreement on the Greenberg property, but we still have not come to full terms on that agreement. What I'm asking is for this public meeting to be held so that we could peel off that 1.5 million dollars that we had put towards the paving, so that Highway can start doing the chip sealing and, and crack sealing. The intent is to do half of it in the spring, the other half in the fall. Between now and the date of the public meeting, or the town meeting, we'll put together an actual list of roadways and the amount of lengths of streets that we'll be able to accomplish in this phase of the paving. Just a reminder that when we did do our public audit and we put out our questionnaire, paving was one of the biggest topics in the response to that questionnaire. That's just to kind of bring you into the realm of where we're at. I will get all the minutes of the meetings, we'll get you copies of it so you can review them before the town meeting.
Thank you. Any comments from the Town Council? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $4,370 to the Water and Sewer Hydrant Maintenance Account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of $300 for a third-party review for conservation inland, wetland agency application, 2202-17.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute an agreement with Dayton Construction Company for the replacement of Bridge Number 04409, the Wilson Street Bridge over Steel Brook, State Project Number 9153-409.
Is there a second?
Second.
Either town manager or Jerry, if you want to just kind of summarize the project and why we want to get this project started as soon as possible?
Good evening, Jerry Lukowski, Director of Public Works. Basically, I should have probably asked for it last week when I asked for the additional funding, but the contract has been reviewed by the town lawyer, by myself, the town engineer, and Dayton. So, this is like one of the final steps that we have to get the contract in place, and then I could issue out the notice to proceed for Dayton to start. Once again, it's prime construction season. The plants haven't even opened yet for asphalt, but I'm worried about when they close in November and December, so we can get the road back in place to, against each of the bridge abutments. And this basically gives the town manager the authority to sign on the line. In the future, I want to have these contracts within the bid documents, so it's much more efficient for us to move out and get a shovel in the ground for the projects.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to adjourn.
One minute's second. Oh, sorry.
Go UConn.
Have a good night.
Recording stopped.
9:20, something like that.